Okay, and we will open the meeting at 6:30. So Ryan, could you take us through the virtual meeting information, please?
Yes, thank you. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by Zoom. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Dan, you're muted.
Hi, so we are now official and we are in open session and we have a couple of attendees. I don't know if they're interested in participating in the open session portion of this, or if there's anyone else that you know of, Ryan?
I believe that's Lori for the election part and Lindsay for the HR part, so we're good.
Okay, sounds good. If there's no one there, then we'll move on to what we have as items two and three, announcements and presentations. I don't see any here. Do you have any that are late adds?
The only thing that I would like to have for an announcement from the staff Lori can cover, just briefly going over early voting. I know a lot of people are asking questions about that, so maybe she can cover it when she pops in.
Okay, should we talk about Halloween during announcements here? This is maybe typically why we would do things like that, or, you know, I know it's not on here, was it on here? Were we planning to talk about that somewhere else?
No, but we can.
Okay, so can you let us know what you know about Halloween in Hubbardston?
Yes, so Halloween is quote unquote on. The Board of Health met and discussed the risk benefit of holding Halloween, risk being in the COVID-19 environment, allowing that type of gathering and reward being continuing with traditions. So in terms of traditions, the traditional Halloween hoedown in the town center run by the police department is not going to happen this year to limit the gathering size, but the Board of Health has said that traditional Halloween trick-or-treating, as long as folks are following social distancing guidelines, gathering guidelines, and the use of face masks is permitted in town. And it will be not enforced, enforced is the wrong word, but the police will be there to help assist folks in the town center area and make sure there isn't an overcongestion of people. But it's good news, we're going to have Halloween here in Hubbardston in the best way possible, trying to take advantage of a tradition in the current situation.
Okay, is there a, I've had a number of questions on this. Is there a document that people can refer to that may have some guidelines at least so that everyone's on the same page about expectations? You know, I don't even know what words to use anymore when we talk about all this, but I'll just use these that come out, right? Do you know if we have anything that people can use?
Sure.
What's that, Jeff?
Guidelines, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Yeah, so we can put that on the town website and send it out through email and on the social media. Some of the guidelines were posted on our traditional areas and social media, but we probably should do that weekly until Halloween, just to help answer those questions. And of course, anybody with any questions or concerns can contact me or the Board of Health, and we can go over them in detail, but we can post those for sure.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, then moving on to new business item four A, we are at the 2020 state election warrant, which is going to require a vote.
Joined by Lori, our town clerk.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. So the election warrant is for the state election. It's just saying who's going to be on there, it's just approving it. You guys, once you vote on it, you will sign off on it, and then it will be posted. By law, we have to have it posted at multiple locations, which include the school, town offices, the post office, and Mr. Mike's convenience store, so.
And that's by when law?
Tomorrow, so tomorrow's our deadline. I know I had talked to you guys before saying that it's a close deadline compared to the meeting, but everybody should be good about coming in. I will have it ready, I'll be in the office tomorrow at 7:45, so anybody can come over and sign it, and then I'd like to get it up by like noon to wish tomorrow, as long as it's up by end of day, though, for when the post office closes.
Hey Lori, could you do us a favor? Could you email all of us after you leave the meeting to just remind us? So we've got that in our inbox, so we can, we do that?
Yep, not a problem. And I have your phone numbers, too, so I can always call, don't you worry. Um, so early voting, so well, do you have any questions about the warrant? And you would need to vote on that to sign it and approve it to have it.
Oh, yeah, let's deal with that first. I don't have any questions, anyone have any questions? No, okay, so we should probably take a motion to approve the warrant?
Make a motion to sign and approve the warrant.
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote. Dan, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? Okay, Lori, what were you saying?
So early voting, I don't know, Ryan said he had questions, so do you have questions, Ryan, that needed to be addressed, or is it just general information about it? I can't hear you, sorry, you're muted.
If you could just put out the general times and where people can find times for early voting, I think it would be good.
Sure, so early voting was held this past weekend. We ended up having a total of 111 people come in, there were 66 on Saturday and the remainder coming in on Sunday, and that was for four hours. We had early voting today, I want to say there was about 62-ish. I have the numbers at work, I didn't bring them with me, but that was held from nine to two, so it's going to be held the remainder of the week with the exception of Friday. The state mandates that we're open two hour, or two weeks for early voting, but it's close to your hours, so we did not have to be open on Friday. So I'm going to be taking that time to make sure that all the things are processed and, you know, cover anything else. So it'll be held the remainder of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's going to be in my office, the library basement. I do put signs out every day, two at the road and two at my office, so, you know, people can see where it is. The door's unlocked, you don't need an appointment, you just come in. You know, we've had a good flow of people throughout the day, there's really no backlog of people, you know, but people do wait outside if there seems to be, you know, influx of people inside. Saturday, I will be offering early voting and Sunday as well, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. That is a little bit later than last weekend, and that's due to the in-person voter registration that I have to hold, and I will be there from 7:00 to 8:00 PM on Saturday as well for in-person voter registration, as the 24th is a deadline to do that. And then next week, we will have early voting as well, Monday through Thursday, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's when it will end. People, like I said, again, can come in, the hours are posted online, they're on Facebook, on my website, and I left them on my voicemail. Bobby can vouch, it's really long, but I want to get the information out as much as I can, so.
Okay, hey, so, so people should bring, what, they bring a mask, bring a ID, or, you know, what else?
So Massachusetts is a no ID state unless there are certain circumstances, so they don't need to bring one in unless the state requires them to, and it could be because some information that we show, we just need to verify when they come in. More often than not, they don't need it. It is their last name that we go by and they're addressed, they would have to verify that. They don't need to bring a pen, we are providing pens to each voter. The voting machine, we use a pen for instead of a marker, it is a double-sided ballot, there is a question on the back, so we don't want anything bleeding through to the back that would have errors with our voting machine reading it. We are giving out a "I voted today" pen, which they use and they take with them, and like I said, so they would wear a mask in, we do have masks there if they need one or forget one. We have tons of hand sanitizer, I actually just got a big gallon jug from Anheuser-Busch today of hand sanitizer, so, pretty exciting. But yeah, so, so just bring themselves, and like I said, that's about it, just a mask.
Does it say Budweiser on it or something?
It says Anheuser-Busch on it, yeah, it's a big, it's a big gallon of it, and it's liquidy, though, it's not like Aloe, and it says, yeah, Anheuser-Busch, and I was like, really? So doesn't smell anything like beer, trust me, I smelt it just to see, I wasn't sure, so, but.
Yeah, like solo cups next to it, maybe?
Yeah, exactly, you know, start giving those out, a little like, you know, solo cup shot glasses with hand sanitizer and all that, so, but, but yeah, so like I said, just show up, come in, you know, vote, and it's easy as that. People ask the procedure of what happens when they cast their ballot early versus the day of, and so what that is, is it, you cast your ballot, you're sealing it, and then what happens is I have a secure bin that you drop it into. So the day that you come for early voting, your ballot is not actually counted, it's counted on the day of the election. So what will happen on the day of election is I have two election workers that are solely dedicated to cutting and opening envelopes. One of them is Joyce, so, you know, she's very familiar with the process. We're estimated to have about, we have about 1,000 early voters that have gone out so far with about 160-something in person, so we should have about 1,500 ballots to cut open, but they have, two election workers have five hours to do that. So we cut open the envelopes, everything is face down, we're not looking at votes, you know, our goal during the process is to get everything that we need to get done in the short amount of time that we have to get it done. So everything is upside down, cut open, the ballots are folded open, we don't look at them, and we just run them through the machine, and it's just a continual process. So like I said, we're, you know, we're not into looking who anybody votes for, the end of the night, we get the results regardless of who voted for who. Like I said, we're there to perform a, you know, safe, safe election, so.
Okay, great, thanks for the update and everything else. We have anything else for Lori, or Lori, you got anything else for us?
No, it's pretty easy, I mean, people can still vote by mail, there's a little bit of time, don't hold me to it, I can put the deadline out there, I want to say it's a 20, 26 maybe to request a ballot by mail, I've got that number sticking in my head for some reason, so there is still some time. People have also had the question of if they've requested a ballot by mail, can they vote early in person? And the answer is yes, as long as we don't have an accepted ballot on their behalf. So what we're doing is we're having them sign a form when they come in stating that they requested an early voting ballot by mail, and they're understanding that this is the ballot that they're, we're going to be counting versus the one that they have. And the question comes with all of the election stuff, well, what happens if somebody comes in and they cast their ballot and now, now they submit one by mail, right? Now they have two ballots, and that's scary, because there's two ballots out there. That's okay, because our system only allows one, which means that when they come and vote in ma, in person, I actually reject their mail ballot, and that's what they're telling me is they're signing it knowing that I'm going to be rejecting it. So I reject their mail ballot, even though it might not be back yet, it's not anywhere, but if it came back, the system, and I will not accept it. So like I said, only one ballot can be counted per person. So if you decide that you want to vote early or at the polls, you may do so as long as we don't have one for you at the time.
Okay, and just one more question from me. So in the event of an emergency and you can't be there, or weather, or whatever else, how will people, is there a reference people can go to to know that the normal hours that you just stated would be changed or not applicable?
I'm not going anywhere, are you kidding me? I'm a machine, I got this, I don't foresee anything. I have election workers if I need to, other town clerks, you know, I got two weeks to go as of tomorrow, so, you know, unless I get hit by a bus, they're going to see my face those hours, so.
Well, then I definitely take back my question.
So, yeah.
Please don't get hit by a bus.
I'll be sure everybody knows, you know, so, but I don't, like I said, I don't see there being a problem, but, you know, stuff does happen, I get that, so if there is a problem, you know, we'll, we'll put everything out on signs, we have electronic signs, we have the sandwich board sign, the signs on the door, I love signs, so.
Okay, well, thanks a lot.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, so we're, we're on to the Human Resources presentation with UMass Boston, and do we have everyone here who needs to be here for that?
I have someone to call in, Lindsay Katz, and just talk about this project briefly. So a while back, we applied for, there's Lindsay, hi Lindsay. We applied for a community compact grant, and one of the things we wanted to look at, we worked with the state to see if we could revamp our HR policies, which you know has been a goal of mine for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to update them to make sure that they're legally compliant, and second, we wanted to make sure that we were competitive and offering our employees a reasonable benefit package and understanding of what the policies were. So as part of the process, employees are given the handbook and they sign off on understanding it all, so this is now online, and one of the duties when we onboard a new employee will be to review all these policies and understand them, which will allow us to set a nice foundation for, for bringing employees in. And then also the Collins Center, which Lindsay will get into, did a nice assessment of our HR. In every small town, there are issues with HR because it usually falls on, on one position, my position, and TAs have varying levels of experience with human resources, and it's something that needs to be assessed, so it was good to have it assessed here, so. If I missed anything, Lindsay, and if you want to take it away.
That's a great intro, thank you, Ryan. So can everybody hear me? I'm a notoriously soft speaker, so I just want to make sure that we're okay.
Loud and clear.
Okay, beautiful. So like Ryan said, we did come in and probably gave him more policies than what he bargained for, but we did go through, you know, all of what was current state at the time, all of your processes, and I can just take you through the report, try to be beef, do you all have it in front of you?
I'm going to call it up to while you're talking.
Okay, beautiful. Again, I am Lindsay from the Collins Center for Public Management, and a big part of what the Collins Center does is help municipalities, because human resources has changed so dramatically over the years, like especially in municipalities, it's something that's still fairly new. It's something that was once looked at as mostly, you know, payroll and benefits and a few transactional items, and now human resources, you know, it's someone who is a seat at the table, someone who's going to help with strategic planning and true personnel management. So let's see, let's jump in here. And I'll just go over a summary of our findings and recommendations, so I'm going to start on page three. All righty. So I'll just briefly touch on these, and then we'll go through current state and go down right at the end, all of the recommendations, a little bit more beef to them. So the first call out was to create a position of human resources assistant, and again, I would just like to say that these are recommendations, I understand that there are budgetary constraints, so these may not be feasible at this time, but that is certainly an option, we're finding a way to kind of make this work for your town. Also, centralize the human resources files and documents. Most of them are already held under the Board of Selectment Administrator office space, which is wonderful. And let's see, number three, adopt comprehensive employee policies and procedures, which are already done and up on the website, which is wonderful. Create a formal, uniform hiring process, complete a training needs assessment, and add anti-discrimination language to the town's website. And I can say your website was unbelievably thorough, and it still is, so that was a big help for me going through this. So at the time that I sat down with folks back pre-pandemic, I had things spelled out, so on page four here, just how things went, the town administrator had kind of the bulk of the responsibility as the admin, chief administrative officer and personnel officer. So Ryan was the one under the Board of Selectmen who was dealing with recruitment, selection, collective bargaining, policy development, and all the other fun things that go with that. And, you know, Bobby was helping with coordinating some of the work, including file management, the treasure collector's office helps largely to onboard new employees, and they are the ones that are going over, you know, things on day one, to sign off on forms and all of the things, you know, cheese crowded, cheese crossed, eyes dotted, and department heads have a lot of responsibility, they seem to have really taken things and made them their own. So they are posting things, they are conducting their own interviews and onboarding their folks. Down to the compliance assessment here on page five. So in terms of recruitment, it was pretty standard that positions were posted for two weeks, and all the appropriate folk, places for folks to find, which is great. The town does have a standard employment application, and honestly, it was wonderful, so I included some information for future reference if you do ever update it, but it was in great shape. And down into screening and interviewing, I do know in small towns, there typically is not a lot of turnover, which is honestly great. But this is something that when folks come into your organization, it's the first experience they have, so it's an important one, and to make sure that it just goes smoothly and is run professionally. So, let's see here, so I just kind of called out that it can be a challenge for employers to keep up with some of the legal aspects when it comes to just asking for information, and sometimes the folks who are conducting the interviews may not have the most up-to-date information, including knowing what to ask in an interview. So one of the things that I called out was just to have everything go to one place, which would be under the town administrator's office, to make sure everything's going in there and being distributed to either a department head or a board as needed. And then your department heads would continue to hire further folks, but just make sure the process is streamlined. And those department heads or boards, we were saying, should have a training on appropriate interviewing, just to help have some guidance with creating questions and feeling a little bit more confident in their process. And any folks who are not hired, which we do already do this, have a non-interest letter sent, which is wonderful, and then any of those notes, applications, additional data should be filed together in a designated recruiting filing area. One of the things that we spoke about when I was there in person was the Cory and I9 checks should be stored outside of the personnel files. So I'm not sure if there's been a time to go through those files and see if they are stored correctly, but those documents should be kept outside of the personnel file. And Cory checks are actually only to be kept for three years, so once that is, that three-year mark is met, they can be disposed of appropriately. But it was recommended to just create a process to make sure, you know, again, if you've got folks that need to be checked, you can just monitor the date, whether it be on spreadsheet or however you feel appropriate, and then you can track the time and dispose of them appropriately. For I9 collection, again, it's typically done, you know, by one person who knows what to look for, but maybe creating a procedure or checklist would help to ensure compliance and ensure that things are stored correctly in their own file. References have traditionally either been conducted by the town administrator or the department head, and again, we were just talking about centralizing this, so it could either be one person conducting the references or just one person tracking the references. So if you feel it's best for the department head to keep this, just, you know, shooting it to the town administrator's office, saying we conducted the reference on such and such a date, any paperwork that goes along with that reference would be stored in the recruiting file under the town administrator Board of Selectmen's office. For the pre-employment physicals and drug testing. So only our police, fire, and highway departments go through this currently, and one of the callouts is just ensuring, which now you do have the policy, on, you know, just what the pre-employment physical and drug testing is, and what to do should someone not pass the exam. I think this is especially challenging now that marijuana is legal in the state. For your conditional offer letters and appointment letters, you have actually a beautiful template that is being used, so that was wonderful. We just wanted to make sure that those letters come, you know, from one central place, using a template to make sure everything's easy and consistent, so that would include moving the police and fire that currently does it over to the town administrator's office. And then a copy of that would go into the personnel file, which would be centralized as well. For new hire procedures, the onboarding, you know, I don't want to skip ahead here, let's see. So there is a form that you're currently using, what the big callout was, was just to make sure that it gets to where it needs to go before an employee shows up for their first day. So sometimes the treasure collector was getting the information a little too late and wasn't able to prep the things that needed to be prepared, and this includes when somebody leaves, so having a centralized human resources function would just ensure that when somebody either is coming in or leaving, on the other hand, that information would get rolling right away. For orientation and onboarding, the new hire checklist is one of the most thorough documents I've ever seen, so I think that was wonderful, and I'm so happy that you guys are utilizing it, including the mentor for new employees, I just think that's outstanding, so there are no changes to be made there. For central personnel file retention. So when I was doing this in an office, I actually need a form and stapled it on the inside of every personnel file, and would just check off to make sure that every piece of documentation I needed was in there. So it's just something as easy as doing a quick self-audit and making sure that any files that are kept at department level, that that information is getting forwarded to the main employee file. Yep, so the recommendation there is just to go through those follow files. Hubbardston offers a well-rounded benefits package, and the treasure collector's office is responsible for enrollment into health insurance and coordination of those items for employees and retirees. Payroll systems seem to be sufficient and functional for the workforce, I do know it's busy, but it is working. So employees are submitting their time sheets, and then those go through right to the treasure collector and the payroll coordinators and putting those hours, so it seems to be working beautifully for folks. The website, again, was super thorough, I loved seeing the human resources town. The website again was super thorough. I loved seeing the human resources town there. I think the information available to folks is it's perfect. It's clear. It's readily available. The callouts were just to add that equal opportunity, equal opportunity and affirmative action policy. And it's always nice to make the employment application a full form that's simply for convenience. But it's always a nice call out to make you know, that first impression a little easy for folks. And I can't remember now if your job descriptions, I believe they are up to date, but linking those for folks to see with their employment application is definitely a benefit. And adding information about the town's employee assistance program. Leave administration. There were a few things there. I know your military leave policy was wonderful. But other than a few, there was not a formal process for requesting leave. So again, the recommendation is to centralize the system of managing leave, which would fall under the responsibility of the Town Administrator's Office. And that way he'd be able to ensure compliance with collective bargaining agreements as well as current federal and state laws. And for training, folks always love additional training. So one of the important things to call out is that there are a few things required annually, including the sexual harassment policy, just to be distributed, signed off on. Let's see here. And just ensuring that happens will significantly decrease the level of exposure and liability. Adding a training needs assessment into, you know, whether it be from the Board of Selectmen's Office, Administrator's Office, just looking at kind of a calendar for a short and long-term plan on how to train folks would be a huge benefit. In particular, adding additional training for your supervisory and managerial employees. And these, some examples would be ADA harassment, performance management. Jump down, we didn't get, you know, your contracts were sufficient. We looked at police, fire, and Department of Public Works. Jumping down to retirement. Retirement always just seems tricky for folks. I think, you know, you only retire once. So nobody's really an expert in what to do. So we just suggest creating a termination checklist for folks so they know what to do before they retire, what to expect after they retire. And that will also help to process the retirement internally. For your personnel policies, there's a list here of everything that was sent over. So I won't read that to you, but it is certainly extensive. And I will jump right down to the findings and recommendations on page fourteen. So again, number one, creating a position of a human resources assistant would help to kind of take the burden off of your town administrator, having someone underneath that position to help with the centralized human resources function would certainly be an asset. Some communities are sharing this or having a part-time person. Again, it's all about what your budget can handle and what you feel is appropriate, but that is the first recommendation. So this person would help with, you know, the clerical hiring duties, record maintenance, policy maintenance, and the training coordination. Centralizing the human resources files and documents. Again, this is just making sure that things are uniform in terms of record keeping and that things are up to date with your federal and state laws. This helps to decrease the exposed liability. So making sure that any documentation that is kept in those follow files is forwarded up to the main employee file is super important. And again, just highlighting that self audit for I nines and Cory checks. The recommendation of standard leave request forms. Again, it just helps things to be a little more methodical and easily tracked. So that will help folks request it. You know, any leave from vacation to family medical leave. Recommending the adoption of a wide range of policies, which it looks like you've already put into place, which is wonderful. Creating a formal, uniform hiring process. So again, all of your department heads, even though it was, you know, a fairly closed process, it was a little bit different. So ensuring that this is consistent will help to make sure that folks are having the same same experience when they're going through the town acquisition process. And calling out that either the town administrator or a representative from that office administer the hiring process there. There's a lot of moving parts to it. So making sure that nothing is skipped. Yeah, it's very easy to forget to do a step in it and then have to circle back. So having someone responsible for it will be very helpful. Finding number five, the training needs assessment. This will just help to make sure that all the critical and necessary annual trainings are on the calendar and are happening every year. It covers your basis as a town in terms of liability and then adding additional training for folks after conducting a needs assessment will help to, you know, keep your folks interested in coming to work, help them grow. And again, you know, called out a suggestion for those in terms of family medical leave progressive discipline. The town website again was wonderful and full of information, adding that anti-discrimination statement is important for folks to see, even though it is already on the application. And that was really it. I honestly cannot say more wonderful things about the folks that I was able to sit down with. Everyone was incredibly competent, incredibly kind, and seemed to work very well together. So hopefully these few tweaks will help will help to further that collaborative environment.
All right, great. So we've got a couple of questions.
I have one. I've got a question if I could. And a Lindy in a town that is ours, which is a small town, we're coming and going on that much. Is it conceivable that the position of the assistant would be a part-time position or just added to someone who's already on staff?
It could certainly be either. But I've seen it done in a variety of different ways. I actually started in a town. That's how I started working for the Collin Center. I was the first human resources administrator in that town and I was only there trying to think if it was twelve or sixteen hours a week. It wasn't a lot. So I've seen folks bring someone in for a very limited amount of hours, or if you have someone who has the capacity to take that on, they can certainly take that on.
So in that vein, you did already state that their community share this so that infer a part-time position as you did your presentation. But are there HR firms that, you know, sort of specialize in providing, you know, this service to municipalities or I guess private, but municipalities that that are also kind of, you know, part-time, but that's just a service you'd pay for.
There are. So I don't know exactly how their contracts work, but you can keep someone on retainer to do all of your human resources related work. I'm not sure you know, how exactly they charge it, if it's a flat fee or if that's, you know, as needed, if you call them what they need to do. And I think it does depend on your community. If you feel like there's a benefit of having someone there and having somebody know the face of that person, you feel like they can go to them, or if you think, you know, everyone would be comfortable picking up the phone and speaking to someone, then that's certainly an option.
Okay. I mean, the reason that we, you know, you've said such nice things about our, our sort of policy or the way we is, you know, you wouldn't, if you were here a couple of years ago, you probably wouldn't have been so nice. The executive staff has done a great job over the last few years of really taking priority and this and trying to get us to a place where I think they feel comfortable and Ryan specifically where he feels comfortable with this so that we're we're in a position to be, you know, thorough, to be responsible and protected. So, you know, I appreciate your comments. I have one, just one other question. You know, everybody can can join in too, but what is, what is reasonable accommodations familiarization? So what is that?
So that would be like if yeah, even like a wheelchair room or having an accessible. I'm trying to think of what it would be in an office. If someone maybe has a back problem, they may need a certain chair, an ergonomic assessment, you know, for their wrists at a computer all day. Or if they may have, you know, a medical issue with their eyes and they need to take a break from their computer screen or have one of those blue light boards installed. So there are certain things that would come up. And sometimes it comes up accidentally and organically where someone may be speaking with another coworker and they may say like, oh, I have. And I've been getting all of these, you know, pains in my chair, you know, it's bothering me and my doctor said X, Y, Z. And just kind of hearing those things puts an employer on notice. And they can come back with follow-up questions. But it's a tricky thing because it is, you know, personal medical. So that's why we suggest having folks go through a training just to know what's appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, those sound tricky. Thank you. Anything else, Rosie? Ryan?
I'd add real quick, COVID is actually creating a new section of reasonable accommodation with family care plans, exposures because of, you know, some people's risk is higher than others. So we're getting our, our full training on reasonable accommodation and all its goods and bads in this environment as well. So having a strong policy there and understanding how to balance the needs of different employees is really important because liability wise, it's, it's one of our biggest liabilities. So.
That's certainly a challenge.
Okay. We have anything else for Lindsay? Doesn't look big. Thank you very much for, you know, sharing the Collin Center and all you guys have done with the town and hopefully we can work again in the future.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Lizzy.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So we have, we have Travis? Not yet.
We don't yet. And I still have a couple of things to finish up with this topic. So.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. HR policies. Okay. Good.
So one good thing is I hate getting these reports and doing nothing with them. So the, the grant we got, there's a little bit of money left over in the grant for the human resources. So I did contact the state. And they're going to let us use the remainder of the money to hire a person to implement some of these recommendations. So two in particular. We're going to contract to make sure that our files are fully compliant. As you can see, it's, it's a tremendous project. And I need assistance. Otherwise that was, that's all I would do for a month or so. And you need me doing more than just that. So the files project is going to be good because it's going to get us up to date and centralize everything. And that, that seems like just a paragraph or a bullet, but it is a ton of work and it's, it's legally very challenging. And then the second thing is the training needs assessment, which I think is important. So we're going to bring someone on to create a calendar, a training calendar for us, the exact requirements, help us find online resources to make it more efficient and implement that immediately. So it's good that we can attack those, those specifically, those two things right away. And some of the other things I'm going to be handling over the next couple of months. And then for policies, so I'm going to show you this project here. So this is the human resources portal that was mentioned a couple of times. Here are all of the policies that Lindsay and I initially worked on. So the Collin Center sent over basically ninety to ninety-five percent drafts that are fully legally compliant and up to date. And then we worked together to adapt all of these policies to existing policies in Hubbardston. Then we sent all of these policies to the employees for three weeks and allowed them to review, the non-union employees, allow them to review all the policies and make any comments, changes, suggestions. And they did that. We took those suggestions and refined the policies even more, making sure that any changes were legally compliant and gave employees another week to review the the changes. So we have a team effort to create new HR policies that are built off the old ones, but also now legally compliant. So the highlight of our changes for you. Because the Board of Selectmen does have to approve these policy changes. And it's a lot. So we should talk about how you're going to do that. But the major changes, and I'll just put this document up so you can see it. So these are changes that are not legally necessary or changes from the existing policy. So we updated all the policies to reflect current, current law and practice, best practice for sure. We defined our employees better. So this makes sense in a small town where you have some part-time employees and you have some part, part-time employees and you have some employees that just work in elections. So we, we define each type of employee and the main one we added was a part-time employee with leave benefits. And what that means is we have these employees, Bobby used to be one before we recruited her up to full-time. Nancy in our police department, Dennis in our DPW. So these are people that work every single week, but don't meet the definition of a benefited employee, which has to be twenty hours. So in a small town, you intentionally hire under that threshold because of budget reasons, as we, as we keep mentioning. So this type of employee would get simply one personal day per year and would get paid holidays. And we thought that was important because this is a staff that we rely on. This is the type of employee that makes or breaks a department. And we cannot add fiscally to our budget. We understand we can't expand positions, but we can make one small adjustment and allow for holiday pay and for a personal day pay for some of these employees that we're calling part-time with leave benefits. So you can certainly look at that policy and see what we did there. We also codified the review of the classification and compensation plans. This came up in the Board of Selectmen Goals conversation. And also we've been doing it the last couple of years is reviewing our wage scale and hiring people on the scale so that we have some parity and some understanding of where, where we're going to be in future years for retention purposes for all of our employees. The next part is probably already discussed. The, we codified sick leave for part-time employees. So state law allows for the adoption of for every thirty hours worked, you'd get one hour of sick leave if you're a part-time employee. This is mandatory in the public sector. And it's hit or miss in the private sector. So we've been doing this for a little bit. For every thirty hours, our part-time employees work. This is our, our part-time employees who are under the new definition of part-time with leave benefits, but also accrue a little bit of sick time every month for, for their use when necessary. Then we've organized all of your policies into that page that you just saw. We codified the evaluation process. So you, you know that evaluations are important to me. And to make sure that we're mentoring and tracking performance amongst our staffs to include goal development. So we've codified all of that. We strengthened our discipline language, not because we have a discipline problem, but to protect employees and to protect the town in cases where people aren't meeting standard. You should have a, a strong policy that allows employees to understand where they fit into that, in that discipline policy. So that when it's enacted, it is legally binding. And then a grievance policy. So we didn't have a non-union grievance policy. This came up in some of our bylaw discussions before. So the grievance policy is important because in our structure, almost everybody reports directly to me. So I am under the current Is important because in our structure, almost everybody reports directly to me. So I am under the current grievance policy. The. Where it ends, you can grieve to me. So it would be awkward for an employee to grieve directly to their, to their boss. So this grievance policy now allows for someone to go to their department head when that exists, to go to me. And then if they don't agree with my finding, then they can go to you. As the final, final authority. And it allows for, um, for not such a. Steep pyramid, especially when we have such a flat hierarchy. So those are the major, major changes. Uh, like always, this. I'm going to need to know what the board needs for, for first reads. Or if they want me to go in any more detail or answer any questions, but at some point, if we're going to enact these policies, they do need to be passed by you. It could be a slate type of thing. I wouldn't recommend doing it tonight, but we should set a time to, to solidify these changes. Cause right now we're offer, operating in a quasi. Non-updated policy state and as I've been talking about for months, we do need to fix that. So.
Are all of those that you listed on the previous screen that were on our website, are all of those amended since the last time? If ever the board has seen them?
Yes. Okay, some of them are just single words and things. So. I, I can tell you with confidence, not trying to, to say just pass certain things that. What I just highlighted on that paper are the only substantive changes to our policies.
Okay, well, why, why don't we just say, you know, two meetings from now, you know, a month from now. Um, that, you know, so give us some time to look at that on a, on our own. And then, uh, we'll put it on the agenda to take action on it if, if we're prepared at that time. All right?
All right, sounds good. Okay, I do have Travis now too, unless there's anything other questions for that.
Hello, Travis. Travis, can you hear me?
He's muted.
All right, I'm here now.
All right. So before you go, Trav, just, uh, going on the agenda. So we're on item four, uh, D. On new business, um, and this is our annual winter operations review, which we, we, we try to have, uh. The DPW director, who's been Travis the last few years in to talk about, um, you know. What's to come and, and how we're prepared, if they were doing anything different than we used to and, and that sort of thing. So. Um, no real format here, Trav, and you've been through this a couple of times. So do you have a little something you can sort of start us out with?
Sure, um, this year we have gone through all but one piece of equipment. For, um, pretty much a restoration undercoat. Our mission is to have our trucks last as long as possible, obviously. Knowing that we're in pure salt all the time. So, um. We have a new undercoating system, which, um, so far has worked very well. And we added a new piece of equipment. Um, ninety-five Oshkosh, which is replace the ninety-eight. Um, Ford wing truck, which the Oshkosh is a wing truck. And we've used it a lot more than we've used the ninety-eight. We've been using it to spread the. Uh, Raz on the dirt roads for dust control. And it's, uh, it's been a definite part of our tool, but going forward in winter purposes. Um, all the equipment is, uh, been gone through. We have, we're in the process of the O-four Mac going through, which is. Really a mess. And, um, we're fixing some plows that we have to weld up. Our salt shed is full to the door. So we're starting out good there. Our sand, our sand salt mix that we use on the dirt roads, which is three to one. Is fallen undercover. It's not out in the open anymore. And, um. Literally all the machinery is ready to go. So, um, we're in good standing, uh, sidewalk machine is good. Um, we were actually given a sidewalk machine from Rottland that they're not using anymore, which is the same as the one. We have, just a little older, which, um, we're going to actually keep a broom on one. For the light stuff. So we're not. Chewing up dirt if we don't have to until stuff is frozen and then we'll have the snow blower on the newer track, trackless. So, um. We'll have two, so we're not going back and forth and making a mess. So, um. Really, uh, we've been persistent on making it and going through and PMing them and making them last for the long haul. So. Um, there was a lot of work this year to get them that way. So. Um, I'll probably put some pictures on the, uh, website, the show. Uh, we've had a lot of compliments, people coming in and seeing the equipment. So, um, excited for this year. And we should be prepared. We got one more spinner to put on, which is the. Twelve freight liner, which will have the last electronic spreader. Um, controls on it to help minimize waste of salt. Other than that, I mean, should be in good standing. Nothing's changed. We're. Everything's the same. I believe you got a updated copy.
Yeah, we're scrolling through right now. Yep.
So.
So hey, so there'll be, there invariably will be broken equipment, um, just, you know, of course, right? Are there, you know, because we've got some older equipment and some harder to get parts and that sort of thing. Do you? Do you, you know, stock up a little bit on some of those things that are, might be hard to get, especially, you know, in the, in the middle of a nasty situation?
We, over the years, see what stuff kind of gives us an issue. So we do have extras of that hoses, brake cans. Um, sp- specific parts that, you know, like I said, we did have issues. Usually we, what we're having a problem with is hydraulic lines br- breaking. So, um, usually when one goes, we get another one, just the same, especially if the piece of equipment is going to be with us for a while. Um, but once we actually do that, we, we do stick with a quite of a tight. Preventative maintenance of looking for any rubbing. Um, when we put a new set of. You know, hydraulic lines on, we coat the ends of the fittings. So they, one, they don't rust because that's usually the fail point on them. Um, but yes, we do have extra parts for the equipment.
How about routes? So, you know, the. There's turnover sometimes in your department, right? Are there, are there, are, you know, workers doing new routes? Different ones than they've done before? Do you, do they, do you, do you drive it with them? Do they drive it before the season to sort of understand what their roots are if they're new? Or how does that, uh, scenario work?
We have, um, one. One new employee for this, uh, snow season, uh, Mike Caruso, great employee. Um, he's, uh. He will drive with the truck with the plow on it, probably fill it up with some sand, just so he gets the feel for running over the road that he's got a plow. And we get him out there before the snow flies. So he can see the edges of the road if there's any obstructions, rocks, stumps, whatever it may be. So, um, we keep the breakdowns minimized. Um, but yes, I mean, I, we usually keep people on their own routes. That way. Uh, they know what, what their little imperfections are and they get their roots down to, you know, make good time. So. We don't, it, there's no one usually on anyone else's route unless there's either someone out or someone new.
Hey, so have you had any conversations yet, um, with the school or the police, uh, about how things are going to work? Now that we've got a little bit of a change drop-off situation. In the center of town with barrels and the way it's sort of cordoned off with the, you know, COVID. Um, that obviously can't really happen like that when there's snow there, if we've got to plow it out of the way. So have you guys had any discussions yet?
We have not had discussions. I, um, have talked with the chief on and on, off and on. Um, they're limiting how many cones they put out there now. It used to be like fifteen and now. They brought it down to six, which they're only trying to bring it down to a couple. Because pe- parents know what they need to do. So, um. With that said, even the signs that we have, those are minimized also. But, um, soon to come, we usually talk with the schools and Sheila usually calls me anyways, and she'll call me during the storms also. But, um. We usually have, you know, good communication throughout storms.
Okay, and I got one more. Um, so about, about subcontractors. So I guess first off, do we have those? Um, uh, secured and then in the event that we get people who are sick or call in or for whatever reason that we have. Um, sort of backups to make sure that we can, um, you know, clear what we need to clear.
Um, we have our two, um. Winter help that we call in there from town. We got Paul Sweeney and Rich Clapham and. Um, they've been with us for a couple of, Paul's been. For you, a few years and, uh, Clapham is also, he's like three. So, um. They're all signed up for this year. Um, they know their routes and when I have, we have a big truck down, they fall into that route, you know? So when we are a full staff and everybody's on. Um, they come and they clean all the intersections, get all the hard areas. If there's a big truck that's down and they need to get in there, like if the mechanic's in, then they, they usually go into Pinecrest, one of them. And that takes care of that. So, I mean. We've done it many years now and we have a good system and everyone flows pretty well and knows what they need to do. Um, Rich Clapham also has a CDL, so he's able to get in a, a large truck also if we were down, uh. You know, a, a union help. So. Um, one of the guys are out, the Rich is able to drive one of the large Class A trucks. So. That's, that's a good, um, variable that we have there with Rich. Um, other than that, um, I mean, we, we got it down pretty good and the guys usually. Can fall in and make up for somebody if they need help. So, uh, I think, uh. I'll have, um, we'll be down. One of our part-timers at first because I'm going to need him to go around with Mike and show him. You know, how to do the road and where to push and, you know, how to do the roads and stuff and how, what we're looking for the roads to be. So. Um, when to treat, when not to treat, you know, on the route and get used to the route. And I told him to, don't tell me. Um, you know, you don't need him anymore, just to, you know, think you're going to make me happy. What makes me happy is that you understand your route and that you are comfortable. And then I'll allow, you know, to be by himself. So the, my biggest thing is just to make sure he's comfortable and safe. And, um, we get the roots cleaned. But he's, he's ver- he's very well, uh, he's. You know, he catches on well and listens, a very good employee.
Okay, um, I, uh, so, um, you know, public safety and, and sort of general resident happiness. Are number one, right? But a close second is cost control, um, for, uh, you know, uh. The town's purposes, obviously. You talked about a change last year in, in sort of the on-call. Um, minimum hours, uh, compensation, I think, right? Um, and maybe I'm remembering that incorrectly, but I'm kind of asking this question too, because we've got, you know, a new member. Um, and, you know, and do you, do you, can you just go over again, I guess, how that works as far as people being on-call and. Um, you know, the minimum hours that you pay for each of those events.
Because there's no. Regimented, it's going to be this long because storms have been weird the past few. As we all know, there haven't been snow, there've been sleet and it's hard to just send somebody home. And call them back in half an hour. You know what I mean? Because not all of us live right here. So.
Yeah, we missed the beginning of that.
Think of the safety aspect of. Oh, sorry.
At the beginning of that. So we, could you just sort of say what you said at the beginning of that?
Yep, um, there is no set plan of how many hours someone would be in. You know, on a storm because we just do them storm by storm. Th- there is really hard to just state that it's going to be eight-hour storm. Um, they're all over the place. So, um, for on-call people, there's an on-call list. Each person's on-call per week and dispatch has their number. And if they get called in for a slippery spot or. You know, uh, wind drifts or snow drifts or anything like that, um, they're called in, they get a four-hour minimum. Um, to come in, that's union contract. But otherwise, when we're in for a storm, I really look at all weather stations. And aspects of what it's going to be and make sure that we're in early enough. As, as best as I can to pre-treat. That way, one, we get it down before the, you know, sleet or anything freezes to the road. And the safety of everybody, because we do have some pretty hilly areas in town, which are cold. So, um, like I said, it's, I'm a weatherman for six months and it's. It, it, it's hard when the weatherman don't even know what's happening. So. Um, I take it from all a- all aspects, different areas, different weather channels. And, uh, like I said, it, it's hard to just say that I'm going to keep someone in. For six hours, eight hours, whatever it is. Soon as I, um. Soon as I can see that someone can go home and we're good, uh, you know, I send everybody home. Um, like, I wouldn't keep anybody if the debt didn't need to be here for financial purposes, so on and so forth.
Dan, if I might. I'd like to ask a question of Travis. Is that okay?
Of course, right, yes.
Uh, following the point of cost control. Travis, if you could, could you, uh. Give me an assessment of where you see us in terms of readiness and positioning for the onset of this winter. This, and so much as last winter was mild. For us, uh, how do you see us in terms of? As you were saying, salt and so forth, uh, your budget. Are you anticipating? A supplemental budget coming down the road as it has a few winters back? But if we have an average or maybe slightly above average. You think we're going to be okay? Well, how would you assess this?
Well, I'd hope that the winter would, you know, be good to us. Um. I'm pretty stingy on how much we put out and, um, what we do. We're starting out with a full shed of salt, which we've never done. Usually we have at least a half a shed when we start out, but we're starting out with a full shed. So that's pretty good. Um, to, to, to begin. But, um, really it's, I, I can't predict what's going to happen this year. I, I don't sit, think that we'll be in a bad position. I think we've put ourselves in a pretty good position, especially having a full shed of salt. And, um, having a three to one, it's full also and undercover. So, um. I don't see anything being an issue. Um, and I do my best, obviously, not to spend over budget. So, uh, we got a good price on salt this year also. I don't have the price in front of me, but it's, uh. I don't believe it's much than what it was last year. If anything, I think it went down a little bit more. So, um, having all the spinners that we, the spreaders that we put on there, the electronic ones. Um, they have definitely, you know, uh, tightened up everything, what we put out. And the guys also know, we've had our training, we've had our talks. Um, and they all have a good idea of when to put down half treatments and full treatments. And, uh. We, we got a pretty good, uh, grasp on it. I, I don't see really an issue. I don't want to curse myself either.
I, I got you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Anyone else have any more questions for Travis? Okay, well, I appreciate you coming in, Travis. We, we, like we have other years, we, we, we'll probably want to do a, a, a mid-winter, uh. Another one of these. I think we fail usually when we schedule it, it snows. So you're not able to come, but we'll just reschedule, uh, as necessary. But, um, you know, sort of expect that from us and, you know, if you need anything from us, please let us know.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
Have a good night.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Ryan, for, for facilitating that. Um. We're now on to, uh, are we good to move on? Ryan, you good?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to old business. So we put a, a new item on here, um, from old business, which is. So we put a a new item on here um from old business, which is item five A, which is a B O, uh Board of Selectment Goal Review Discussion. Um, this was, this is um a couple of weeks ago. Um, Chris and I had a conversation about, you know, the Board of Selectment Goals that we had talked about probably a month ago now. Um, just to to just discuss, you know, how we, more than anything, follow through first uh with with these and and if there is any sort of um accountability, I guess. Um, Chris, I don't know if you wanna speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can speak to it. Um, you know, the gist of our conversation, Dan and I, was that we talk about these goals. Um, we set these goals and then we go 12 months and we review back to see what we did with these goals. Um, in my experience, that's not how goals should work, right? They should be a living, breathing thing. We should talk about them, we should change them if necessary, we should stay on top of them, we should check progress on them. And we should facilitate them throughout the course of the year. Not just talk about them at the start of the year and then get our results at the end of the year. I mean, if we wanted to do something like that, I don't see the benefit to it. If we want to modify our processes and talk about these goals every third or fourth meeting and give updates and changes necessary, then we can do that, you know? I think, you know, Ryan does a good job with his goals. And at the end of the year, there are some goals where he says, you know, we just didn't do it because it became irrelevant throughout the course of the year, it wasn't pertinent to us anymore. So, you know, I'm okay with setting goals if we're gonna talk about them and maintain them and update them as a living document. But if we're gonna set them, process them throughout the year and then recap them at the end of the year, I don't think they add much value to our processes.
Um, you know, you, uh, I appreciate your your um candor more than anything on this as well. I mean, I I think our intent, I agree, you know, I I think it's a good idea to to change things up a little bit. Uh, I think our intent is to to state them and then have the way we do things um and the way it's sort of set up through our town administrator to, you know, uh, focus on them um throughout the course of the year and then of of assessment at the end. But that's not, you're right, I mean, overall, that's that's, I'm just sort of backtracking over what the the overall thought process is probably is, but it's more efficient to do what you're talking about, it's more work too, right? So we just, that's just the reality of it, it just is. So um, you know, I I don't know, I mean, if anyone has anything they wanna to to comment on this, I, you know, Chris and I had a long conversation about it and I I think it's a good idea, you know, every, like he said, three or four meetings, we 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 put the goals up there and and um it gives us a certain amount of accountability. And another portion of it that Chris and I talked about were was that if there are certain um, you know, goals that one of us may be able to help more on, right? If 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 we're either a liaison to a department where we've put a goal, we have some previous experience in another committee or department that we've got a goal, that's one of the things that we can, we can sort of take on ourselves a little bit more and be the one who can update on, you know, uh, what would what would work out to be a, you know, every other month or or something in that respect. So I don't know, just we're up for discussion here, that's why we put it back on the agenda. If anyone else wants to sort of chime in about it, or of course, uh, Chris, again, if you have any further thoughts?
No, actually, I've said my thoughts.
Okay, well, I I think it's a good idea. So I think unless anyone has any problem with it, um, uh, at moving forward, you you know, we're gonna, we're gonna put a line uh like we had with a couple of years ago and we added committee updates, we're gonna, we're gonna have, you know, goals updates. Um, we're not gonna have it every meeting because, you know, at that point, we 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 need um, I I just think it's, it's not a good idea to do that all the time because there's lots of other business we have to take care of too. So um, so so Ryan, I don't know, I guess we can, we can um uh, talk a little bit about how often to do this and some of that may have to do with the fact of of what time of year it is and whether we're skipping meetings or whatever else. But um, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. And I think, Ryan, at that opportunity, um, you know, we can, we can ask for your help as well. If there's anything we need assistance with, um, you know, not to overburden you there, but I I think we we might lean on you a little bit in in some of those instances.
Sure, yeah, we we keep a calendar, so your Bobby and I track uh meeting agenda items because obviously there's some that come up all the time and some that come up rarely. So we can plug those right in for uh just segmented updates and do a better job of tying the stuff that um we put on the agenda to to meet your goals more explicitly. And I I think your idea for having liaison spearhead their their individual goals is strong. That ties to stuff Katie was talking about during the goal-setting session. So I I think it could be very beneficial.
And this is, obviously, this is in its infancy, it hasn't really begun yet. And it, we may, we may, you know, we we don't know what the result's gonna be. It could be, man, we make too many goals, right? It's just too much to handle. And 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 that that's fine, right? It just turns into, okay, we need to, we we've got a few that that makes sense to focus on because we're not able to get to these or it's, you know, I don't know what the result's gonna be, but if that's it, so be it. If it's, if it's more, great. So I I um, you know, the the process, you know, sort of has begun now and and will um, you know, we'll we'll talk about when it goes on the agenda next. Okay. Okay, um, so moving on, so this is uh the next item of old business, something to to recap sort of again from our last meeting was was um some some clarity on the ambulance billing write-off discussion. Um, it's probably the best way to to uh to set the table on that, Ryan.
So, yeah, so I brought up um ambulance billing and um it's on, it's on me in the way it was presented and discussed. Didn't do a really thorough job of explaining what we were trying to accomplish. So I did send the board a memorandum of um work that Chief Hayes and I did with ComStar. And I just wanted to talk about it publicly because I wasn't happy with um the way I presented the material to you last time about ambulance billing abatements. And why this is important again is we, anybody, any bills we have outstanding that are not paid, we still keep on the books as a receivable. And our auditors are telling us, you know, you just can't keep receivables on your books forever. It's bad accounting process and it's burdensome and it needs to go away. So the board did vote to abate all of our old ambulance bills, but I wanted to just bring up a little bit more information. I already sent this to the board, so I'll go through it quickly, but I think it's important for public discussion, so. Just bringing up the memorandum that I sent. Okay, so one of the questions the board had was when we present, when the the document was presented to you last time, it looked like it was only three years of abatements. Um, and that's basically, it was formatted and all kinds of things, but that was not correct, even though it looked that way. So we do have an unpaid ambulance bill balance of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. However, these bills range from two thousand four until two thousand twenty. So I broke those down for the board. Each year, how much has gone uncollected? And the yellow line there is, we cannot statutorily after seven years go after older bills. So for sure, these older bills need to be abated and and have been by your vote if if you choose to to stick to that vote tonight. So what we could get, two hundred and sixteen thousand is available for collection. So that's two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty. And here is what we do for our current billing process. So ComStar is our, they work with our fire department to bill on any of our medical procedures and and transfers. So they uh send, they try and attempt to get three different collections from folks. And when I say collections, it's differentiation between if a person has insurance or if they don't have insurance. So all efforts are made to go through insurance, any types of insurance. And the fire department is involved in this capturing the information for the insurance so that um collections can be done. You'll see in the numbers later, if 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 it's an insured person, we almost always get the full balance of pay. It's the non-insured folks that that result in some of these collections and and why some of the bills are so high. Because um insurance isn't covering them, there's no, there's no cap. So some of these bills are, you know, higher than they would need to be because they're not covered by insurance. So they go out three times and then they they do their own internal collections with a fourth attempt. By contract, that's where they stop and they have a lot of data and statistics that show that they're not gonna have a lot of success after that attempt. So that is pretty standard across towns, that that format. So what could happen after the fourth attempt? We have three options, you can send the bill to a collections agency, like any uh debtor does. You can send the bill to a credit bureau or you can do both of those. So um, collection agency, they're gonna actively try and collect money and the credit bureau is gonna ding someone's credit for not paying. Uh, and the third option is to write it off as something that you're not gonna get a a receivable that's that's not gonna be there. So here are the collection rates for the last three years. And I can go out farther if you want, but three years is a pretty good, pretty good snapshot. So uh in FY twenty, it was ninety-five percent of those who had insurance, we collected money on. Uh FY nineteen was ninety-eight and FY eighteen was ninety-six and the national average is eighty-five. So uh, we're pretty happy with ComStar and our fire departments work there. For those without insurance, the national average is ten. So we had an FY twenty-one thirteen percent, FY nineteen five point five percent, and FY eighteen thirty-six percent. So again, uh, on par with national averages or better. So uh, one question I knew the board would have that I just wanted to answer upfront is what is the collection agency's success rate? So according to ComStar, and we could vet this further, but I believe that they're a good source of information. They get the, they have about a ten percent collection success rate for um for this, which doesn't include their three and a half percent fee. So of that money that's remaining, the two hundred and sixteen thousand dating back to two thousand thirteen, you could conceivably collect fourteen thousand with um aggressive collection efforts. And then the total, what we pay ComStar is we, they don't get any money unless they collect the bill and we have a competitive rate with them of six point five percent. So that's a lot of the background information uh that I just wanted to make sure the board understood. What I'm trying to, what I was trying to do with the vote is to get those receivables off our books. And you can see why my recommendation to you was not necessarily to go the collections route um unless unless it is the will of the board that you wanna do that. And then we also talked about adopting an ambulance billing policy that will allow us to clean these up at least annually. I'm suggesting semi-annually so that we don't have this giant backlog that um that we have to deal with or that future boards have to deal with. And a couple of other recommendations were just to to make sure that we're competitive with our billing agencies. So although I'm happy with ComStar and I'm not recommending a change, um, you should always be looking to procure through the RFP process just to keep people competitive. And then um, the board, it is the board that needs to decide if you'd like to have a stronger collection effort, which some towns do, what you want that to look like. So some towns do non-residents only, they don't wanna go after their collections for residents. And especially in a small town like this, you'd really be targeting your your most vulnerable. Uh, and that's why a lot of towns don't do that. And uh, you're you're targeting people that, for some reason, couldn't pay that bill. It's very rare that someone doesn't pay it, um, just to not pay it. So that is um some updated information and love to see if anyone has any questions or and definitely need to know if you wanna change your vote to uh not abate that list we did last time. So that vote's still valid unless you change it tonight, I just didn't wanna act without the vote.
Okay, so the way that would work, if somebody would would want that, to do that to happen, they would make a motion to to um that effect um at this point.
Ryan, I have a question. Um, I like your comments about reconciling unpaid bills on an annual basis. Can you explain to me how how that would work? How we would fund or pay forward these unpaid bills? Do we account for that?
So we do account, so we project the revenue from ambulance in our local receipts. And we do that uh in the same method we do with everything else. So we take advantage of the revenue with a slight conservativeness in order to make sure that it hits its number. And it's been a while since we didn't hit the number. So that includes our understanding that we're only gonna collect ninety-eight percent of those insured and it's about ten percent of those uninsured.
So you have historical data of what we're not going to be able to collect and you account for that annually?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We really do target it from the other end, saying we do think we will collect this amount. Um, but it equates to the same thing. So once the, everything on that report, ComStar's telling you, we don't think we're gonna be able to collect this unless you go to collections. So that's the report you'd get every six to twelve months. Here is the disposition report for those that are done, that we don't think people are gonna pay. Then you'd act on that. If they do think or someone's paying partially or there's a chance that they're gonna collect, that doesn't appear on the report, they don't put it on there. So I think that's good to know. Um, you're only looking at those that are gonna be very difficult to collect, like any biller has to deal with.
Good, thank you.
Okay, anyone have anything else on that or or wishes to, you know, make a motion to initiate action against our previous? Oh, okay. All right, so there are a few other things on there, Ryan, beyond that, that had to do with um different um recommendations that you had. What are you expecting from us on any of those?
So I did include one billing policy. So um Chief Hayes actually told me that several years ago, before I believe any of you were on the board, that this was discussed, having a policy in place. As many things are, you start something and then sometimes they get pushed aside. So that policy is in your packet. I'm gonna just call it up here, I just, I got a lot of things open, just one second. So this policy would be something that we can adopt and put with our financial policies. This'll look good to the auditors because um it'll hold us to the annual or semi-annual assessment of this policy. And the old one is is perfectly fine, so let me, this here. So here it is in your packet. I would change some of the language, like the, instead of the EMTs, the Hubbardson Fire Department, so it covers all personnel, but um, and then make it generic, so the billing agency. But other than that, this is a good first read for you to look at and see if you're comfortable with the fire chief bringing you, I would say semi-annually, a disposition report for you to act on. This is something we could put in your calendar to make sure that we're doing it regularly and complying and getting that off of our, you know, our liabilities report. So like all policies, this is your first read, I will bring you a second read for you to approve if you choose to do so.
Yes, sounds good. Okay, um, any else on that?
Nope, I'll take care of that.
Sounds good. All right, thanks for readdressing that and clarifying. Um, we'll move on to, you're up again, so we're item six, um, the town administrator report.
So I I don't have a formal report. I've been away for the last week and a half, so I didn't put together a memo for you, but I do have some updates on what I've been working on and what the staff's been working on. So we've been working with a firm in the planning board to um to look at affordable housing options in the town pit and surrounding land area for the town-owned land as part of our goals to to look at the use of town-owned land. So the planning board is trying to see if there's something there and we're awaiting a proposal for for what that might look like um using existing CPA funds and some grants I'd be applying for to put together a study. So there'll be more to come on that, but just a heads up to the board. The Malone Road uh CR that you worked on with open space is now finalized and recorded. The dispatch tower, we are gotten everything we need to dispatch and now we're just waiting for them to break ground. So that is moving along. I did file for a IT grant with the Community Compact. So this is a semi-annual thing you can apply for. The last one we did allowed us to to um upgrade our town software to take on our online building permits. So this one would allow us, and I think will be pretty competitive, will allow us to digitize many of our documents and start um storing our documents digitally. We'd also be able to use some CARES Act money for this because getting rid of filing cabinets creates social distancing space and being fully digital and allowing our residents to access things like street documents would be uh a service that's great to provide under COVID. So we're hoping those two work together to take that off our capital plan and use grant funding to to make our office not paperless, because nothing is paperless, but as close as possible. That would be a big project, but if we can get it funded, it's worth it. And we included money in the grant to run that project so that town staff isn't bogged down with scanning and and other things. Uh, we started work with the green communities, um, getting some of the lighting projects done and working still trying to find a solution for the library boiler. and working still trying to find a solution for the library boiler. And the IMA that we reviewed for the school roof borrowing is, is now complete. Except for a couple of you still need to log in to emails, the DocuSign email that came and signed the IMA that we approved and the school committee approved. So those are um, the, the things that we're, the balls, we're continuing to move forward. In addition to starting the FY twenty-two budget process, which makes me sad, cause we've only had a budget for about two weeks.
Okay. All right, thanks. Hey, while we're on this, so uh, the remainder of this year, as far as um, time uh, uh, off, whether leave or vacation for you, where, where are we looking at? Do, do you know yet, or is that something that you'll be able to provide to us?
For the military?
Anything.
Um, yes, I can provide that too.
Okay.
I'd have to sit down and, and schedule it out for you.
No, no, if it's not scheduled, don't schedule it. I'm just, I'm just wondering if it was already, so um, just asking.
It is, I just, I'd have to put it on paper.
Okay, well, just seeing how that relates to meetings and stuff, so when you get a chance.
This one, uh, this military trip was a little bit of a surprise, so um, I would not have scheduled my um, five-day family vacation uh, back-to-back with this, if I'd known it was gonna exist. So it did, it did put me out a little bit longer than normal. As the military sometimes does.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you. So the next is item seven, which is policies to review. These are a number of first read. Once again, you wanna just take us quickly through these?
Yes, and it will be brief. The first one I wanted to look at with you, so this is part of your goal to review all of policies and make sure that they're up to date. So we'll start with the info center. We've looked at this one in the past and you asked me to give you kind of a consolidated recommendation. I got feedback from a couple of you. So this is the, um, the sign that that um, the information center is located at Clark's Corner, and this is the sign that Katie hates. So this just gives some policy to who can use it, who has to ask to use it, and how that process works, and then what's not allowed on it. So this is what the policy used to look like. Or the current policy.
Now it's got Katie's name over it.
It's just a little, little cluttered and um, I thought the organizations were a little too, little too specific. Is my recommendation to you, and then you wanna make your what's not allowed generic. If you're following me, so um, basically, anyone, any board, committee, commission has access to the center and will be granted priority. And other groups need to come to you to use it. And then these things are not allowed. Because they're just not normally allowed in town functions anyway. So um, you can look at this as a first read, tell me your thoughts, and we can discuss it in public session and edit it and then pass this policy.
Okay.
So the next one is called the next one we'll go to is the street numbering policy. So there's no recommended change, we're just reviewing it. I think I made one non-substantial edit, just to, just language. But this says that the building department assigns your street numbers, and it's an important policy to have, cause that comes up. Um, and it, this is, this is rare, but it seems like the town wanted to have an appeal of numbers if that was ever to come, that comes to you. The building department just said that's not normally in there, but I didn't think we needed to take it out. And then the last one is remote participation. So this is a, I'll show it to you, a policy you have that you don't need because it's state law. So at the time, I believe remote participation was added as something that people can do. Um, but you don't need to do that because the state allows you to do it. So in an effort to I didn't call it up, I apologize. In an effort to streamline your policies, uh, remote participation guidelines are under the open meeting law. So um, it's already covered and is now a thing, especially with COVID. So I would recommend that you vote to rescind that policy um, at your next meeting.
Okay, and there's a more, mortgage subordination that's on there too?
Yes, so this one you've seen a couple times in my time here, so um, there's a septic program that allows folks to borrow. Um, we put a lien on their mortgage. And this subordination policy, if they're ever to refinance, says that the, the town retains its interest and would be paid off first. Uh, occasionally in order to refinance, the, the refinancing company asks you to subordinate their loan or to make theirs a priority, so they're allowed to refinance. So the board has to make a decision as to whether or not they're gonna allow that. And there's a whole application to it. It, it comes before you. There's no recommended change to the policy. It's just good to have.
Okay. All right, so as you said, first read uh, for all those, so that, that'll be honest, to take a look at those and um, you know, next time we meet, we can, we can uh, if we're ready at that point, we'll put it on the agenda and, and decide whether to, to vote on them then.
That's, that's it for policies.
All right, so we are uh, to uh, item eight, which is appointments and resignations. We've got Joyce Green, the Board of Registars.
Just add an appointment or resignation.
Yeah, Bobby, you added this. Do you wanna talk to this one, please?
Sorry, it is an appointment. Joyce would like to be on the Board of Registars.
Second her back in.
Then I would move to uh, set the appointment of Joyce Green to the Board of Registars.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Um, roll call, Dan. Yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Um, we are uh, wage authorizations. I don't see any there. Is that correct? Okay, and the next is uh, minutes to approve. So we've got three of them on here. I don't know, Bobby, if you've got those in front of us, you could remind us who was, who was at or not at these meetings. And the three are September eighth, open session, September twenty-eighth, open session, and then September twenty-eighth, uh, executive session.
So I don't um, have the executive session ones done. I wasn't comfortable doing that without Ryan um, reviewing them. So he said, once he gets back, we'll review them and have them ready for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Is that the new one? Is that the one, September eighth, Ryan? So it looks like just Pat was not there.
Yeah, this is September eighth.
Okay. To accept the Board of Selectmen meetings. Uh, a minute for the meeting, September eighth, two thousand twenty.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote, roll call, Dan. Yes, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Dan.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, four yeses and one abstention. Um, and now we're on to September twenty-eighth.
And make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen minutes of the meeting on September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote. Uh, roll call, Dan. Yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. So on the agenda is the executive session visits from September twenty-eighth, which we'll get to when they are complete. Um, and that's it for minutes, correct?
Yeah, and I just, I just wanna say, I don't, I don't wanna correct Bobby, but um, the, the reason why we need, we need the video, which is on my account to, to review for the executive session so that we can make sure the notes are correct. So I'm not reviewing them, we're just reviewing the video together.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Okay, uh, we're onto item eleven, committee updates, real quick. So we had a town center committee meeting last Thursday. First one we've had since we were the first meeting of COVID, back in March and April, wherever that was. I'm glad we did it. Uh, we had a lot to talk about because the hundred percent design for the town center committee had gone in uh, very recently. Uh, Katie was actually um, at this uh, the full meeting for the town center committee as well. And um, we, we talked about the next steps um, for the town center process. We talked about updates for current road projects. We talked about um, the light fight and town lighting ceremony and all that sort of stuff. Um, and a number of other things. And so the video is on the tap website and it's, it's a good fifty-eight minutes of your life to get an update if anyone's interested. Not just from the board here, but anybody who's uh, who's watching this meeting to get an update in, in town, road and bridge and all that sort of stuff. So um, you know, it's, it's all good. Uh, the way it's currently slated right now, the town center project is approved. And as everybody knows, slated in the Mass DOT um, tip program to go out to bid for uh, January of two thousand twenty-two for construction in the spring of two thousand twenty-two. So that's a full year early. Good time to bid it in the winter time. If all goes well and it gets approved and, and all the normal stuff that it has to go through from the bidding process, um, then you know, we'll, we'll, we're not that far away. So uh, that's the update. Um, so next is item twelve, which is matters re, not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I'm just gonna, I, I'll start off. Uh, so I've got one, it's kind of on the same, we actually discussed it at the town center committee meeting I received earlier that day. Um, a, a, a proposal, uh, which I'm gonna send to everybody after the meeting. Uh, so this is from TEC. And what it is, is uh, we had had a call recently. It was me, Travis, TEC representatives and Ryan um, to discuss uh, a couple of other roads uh, in town. Uh, and those were High Street and Brigham. And the point of this discussion was just to see, to start off the conversation like we did five years ago with the town center and say, hey, can we get a price to do a schematic design, very similar to what we did for the town center back in two thousand fifteen for something to, to, you know, High Street's one thing, right? That's, that's, it's a straightish type road that needs a lot of work. Brigham's not, right? So the, 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 the thought is, is, is do, do we, you know, the, the overall idea of this was to sort of just keep moving forward, just within the, the, the betterment process of the town. And for, for not that much money, which is what we started the process of the town center committee, you know, years ago. So recently got a proposal, which I'll, I'll send to you guys, separated between the two. So basically the same scope we use for the town center, which was a schematic design, a public meeting, a couple of meetings with, you know, us or some other, you know, committee group that would be there for uh, twenty-odd thousand, twenty-four thousand, somewhere in that range, each uh, that we would decide as a select board, A, whether we had the money to do it, B, whether we had the energy to do it. So that's something that you'll see some more about in the coming, you know, weeks or months to see whether we wanna sort of move forward with the next step in the process. And in those discussions was the funding of this. So the, the, we would really only do it if it was funded by someone else. You know, not, not the design. We know we would have to carry that, like we have for, for other projects recently in town. But if we could get on, which we feel like we can, and TEC feels we, we, we can, whether it's the tip program or complete streets or some other things um, that we would, we would maybe be able to, to sort of continue to bite off some more in the years to come. So just expect it, but that's um, you know, something I wanted to, to bring up. And I might as well say, if we did them both, there's a discount. So you'll get to take a look in your own assessment. And Ryan, if you could for a moment, uh, A, if you have any comments you wanna add that I didn't already bring up and sort of B, about our preliminary discussions about whether we could afford, you know, one or both of, of these without going into, you know, um, town meeting um, review.
Sure. So the, the reason why I wanted to, to meet with our engineers is, once the town center project is off, off the books, um, I wanna make sure that the town's lined up for the next projects and continue to engage the, the goodwill of the town center committee and others. We also have the five-year road maintenance plan and the master plan, which identified infrastructure and specifically the Brigham's Brigham Street intersection and public safety is important things. So a high street is our public safety corridor. We use it with our, our fire department because it connects the two departments. Um, it's also would be highly connected or create connectivity for walking for our seniors and connect that street and that old district to our parks. So it's a, something worth discussing. And then the Brigham Street is off the town center project for economic development reasons. When you come into town, it's important for that to have a certain look. And um, again, it would add to walkability and create a less dangerous intersection. So there's a lot of reasons to look at it. And a lot of reasons why it would be attractive for grant funding, which is what I, what I would like to see. A lot of those grants wanna see the town investing some of its own money uh, in order to get the, the, the later money. So this would be you know, my reasons for, for adding to, to the recommendations and what Dan was talking about. So in terms of funding, we have um, some town center funding, some design funding from, from efficiencies that were created in the design process that I believe would qualify for continued use. And then, you know, the board has the ability to use some of its, some of its uh, annual monies, budgeted monies to, to pay for perhaps one of these studies. And then the other one would need to, would probably need uh, town money at a town meeting vote. So when you're looking at the proposals, which will be discussed publicly, those are important things to consider.
Okay, so thanks for that. And again, just to restate, I will send you guys these two proposals, which, which are in uh, one document for each of the uh, the projects that lists what's included. And just to be honest, um, because this is how it was with the town center, it's well worth it. I'm not even advocating for it right now. I'm just saying for the value of what we're gonna get because it's in their interest as an engineer in firm to sort of begin the process because then it turns into three hundred thousand dollars five years later or something, right? So it is a good, um, just from my opinion, um, ir-irrespective of whether we should do it, the value for what we would get is, is worth it, um, money-wise. So, okay. If anyone has any questions on that, um, you can feel free to ask me anytime or, or now or, or whatever, but that, that'll be coming to you soon. Okay, uh, anyone else have anything uh, not reasonably anticipated?
Yeah, I wanna talk about, you know, we talked about Charlie Clark Corner there earlier and the sign that's up there. I wanna talk about the electronic sign article that didn't make it on the warrant. Um, we had planned to get it on there, but the zoning board couldn't get together in time to get that article on the warrant. So where do we stand on that project and how do we keep that front and center and continue to pursue that?
What's needed, there is a draft of the new sign bylaw, which would allow the town to put up an electronic sign if that was the will of the town. You need to have a public hearing for any zoning bylaw change. In the public hearing, the planning board wasn't able to have one before the special town meeting. So all that's needed, all it is to have a public hearing about that bylaw and then bring it to the next town meeting that happens. Which you could call another town meeting, um, and have it happen sooner, or the next available one would be the annual town meeting.
So when you say a public hearing, what, what specifically would that be?
So you have to, by law, you have to advertise in the newspaper and, and certain, certain places, a public hearing. So right now that would be on Zoom. Uh, we'd have to heavily advertise it for three weeks at least. And then the planning board holds a public hearing and anybody who has comments or objections are collected. And then the planning board is required by bylaw to give a report to town meeting on the results of that hearing for voters to decide on whether or not to change the zoning bylaw, in this case, the sign bylaw.
Okay.
So if it's, Chris, if that's something, you know, this board or you wants, then I would, as they say, poke the planning board to start that process sooner rather than later, so it's ready to go for whatever town meeting comes up next. Not that we have one scheduled, but.
Well, that's definitely something I want done, but then again, I've been complaining about the sign bylaw forever. So and it has to do with more than just that Clark's Corner sign. It overhauls the incomplete sign bylaw for all of um, the businesses in town. So it makes it a lot of a easier read and understandable for all of our businesses, depending on where they are in town. So I would definitely say poke the bear to get it ready to go. Cause I don't want this to not go through again next town meeting. I'll be so super pissed. I was super pissed the last time. So.
Yeah, I think we should pursue it. I think we should um, prod the zoning board.
Yeah, I think we should pursue it. I think we should prod the zoning board to keep that front and center and make headway on it.
It's the planning board though, not the zoning board, Chris.
Whoever needs to be involved.
I agree, whoever.
Just taking these notes.
Okay. Sounds good. While he does that, or anything else anyone wants to bring up this time?
Uh, yeah. Oh, go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, no, I just got one thing. Do you have an update on the replacement of the playground at all, where that stands?
Not a, not a formal update, but we are waiting for the results of the grant that we applied for, which is super important because it would be more than, it would be half the product or 100,000 of CPA money that we could repurpose. We think we're really competitive for that. We'll probably find out in January. So if we get the grant, great. We'll start the procurement process. If we don't get the grant, great. We've secured the funding. We'll start the procurement process. We just want to know what funding to use.
Okay, no, I just asking. I've had people ask me, so.
Yeah, Zanda was targeting next summer for it, so we're still on track.
Sure.
Any else?
Yeah, I had one question. This has to do with that, the meeting that you and I were at, Dan, the town center. The town center committee had said, they had interest in me adding lights to the common. And I've had other people say we need more, but that's all anybody ever says is we need more. Well, what does more can, you know, like what do you want me to put? So I'm, I'm looking for recommendations if we want to add more to the common to make the lights a little more festive. We have the tree, we have the manure, and we have the white lights around all the big maples that are up there. I made some suggestions about maybe, you know, a, a theme like a woodland, like have deer in there, or maybe put snowflakes up on the church, you know, and have some of those slideshows going on the side of the building. But again, no one has said anything other than, yeah, it sounds great. Do what you want to do. And then I get in trouble because it's the Katie show and I do what I want and what I think is best, and then I get faulted. So I'm looking for opinions because I don't want to get faulted when people tell me more and then do what you want to do. And then I do what I want to do. And then, yeah, so I need some opinions, guys. What, if anything, would you like to see up at the common for Christmas?
More.
Shut up, Dan.
All right, so I, no, I think, this is, so this is the second or third time I've heard this. I, I think, I think that's a good idea. I think, you know, we start somewhere. The Woodlands idea with the, the snowflakes up on the, the church, as long as the church is cool with it, right? They probably have to say, okay.
Yeah, I can check with them.
All right, sounds good. But that sounds a good, great. Next step. I don't, what do you? Yeah?
No, you're all just gonna put the.
I don't have an opinion or I wouldn't. I agree with more and I would leave it up to you to decide what more looks like. If you're getting negative.
I respect my host, Chris.
If you're getting, if you're getting no input. If you're getting, if you're getting no input, yet you're getting negative comments about it, then shame on the people for not giving input. I, I would leave it up to you. It's your, it's your baby at this point, unless you get somebody that wants to partner with you or give you input. Do what you want to do. And if there's any fallout from it, shame on the people who didn't volunteer the information when they had the chance.
Okay. Anybody else got an opinion before I go shopping? No? Okay.
All right, sounds good. All right, anything else on this item? All right, seeing none, we, we've entered the public and press question and answer period. Is there anything we need to know about, Ryan?
I don't see anything.
Okay, well, that concludes the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, we, we've seen none. We will vote. Roll call, Dan. Yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
All right, unanimous. Night, everyone.